Thanks for having me again on the meeting. I'd just like to remember a couple individuals who have passed away since our last meeting. First one is George Lawrence, who was very active in Yankee Homecoming for many, many years. I think he was chairman back in 1987. And also Jimmy Gaines, who worked in the planning office for about 25 to 30 years. And he was on the planning board, I should say chairman. And then he also worked in the planning, as Planning Director for City of Newport under Mayor Red Molin. He passed away this past week. So remember those two individuals, please? Thank you.
My pleasure.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, do the roll call for the city council meeting October 11th, 2016.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Tanta.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zied.
Present.
Counselor Cameron.
Here.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
Counselor Cronin.
Present.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earls.
Present.
Counselor Agarman.
Here.
Counselor President O'Brien.
Happy to be here.
Happy to have you.
Late file items?
There are no late file items, except for the mayor's update, as always.
Public comment? Susan Kandoff?
My name is Susan Kandoff. I live at 12 Washington Street in Newburyport. Mr. Agarman is my counselor. And I'm here for your consideration, the mayor's appointment to the cultural council, and wanted to introduce myself and answer any questions if there were any.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Slocombe?
Hi, my name is Rob Slocombe. I'm a resident of Newburyport for the last nine years. And I'm a family physician. I currently work for Anethix Hospital. And this past spring, I received my master's in public health from UMass Hamhurst. And I would be very interested in serving on the Board of Health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Afroz Khan?
Yes, good evening. My name's Afroz Khan. I live at 85 Prospect Street. I've been a resident of Newburyport for the last 10 years. And I'm here to see if I could serve on the local cultural council here as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. That's it for public comment. Go to mayor's comment.
Good evening, President O'Brien, members of the city council. A lot of information in the update today, but some of it I will let you read on your own. To start with, you know that the ad hoc group that worked for about a year under the chairmanship of Counselor Agarman, Counselor Zied, and Vogel finished up their tasks of bringing all of the stakeholders together to present a tremendous amount of information, and then shifted the task over to the city to begin moving forward on the modification of waterfront trust docks, consensus building on the conceptual concept for the park, and also the dissolving of the NRA. I think we had a very productive first meeting a few weeks ago, and our next follow-up meeting is on November 22nd at 6:30 in city council chambers. The intermodal facility garage where we are at this point, we will not be doing, have the need to do an executive session tonight. But I had mentioned to you that we had received revisions to the purchase and sale agreement, and our legal has been going through those, and we'll have more information for you once we finish that review. We also signed an updated memorandum of agreement with the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority, which was required to happen in order for us to, as I had mentioned to you, we had to come up with additional funding for the relocation of the tower, since the FTA had paid for it already, and additional work that we were insisting on the facade. So that memorandum of agreement has been signed. We also had a conference call last week with the design team, Desmond, the planning office, myself, Chief Administrative Officer Patty, were on the phone, and we walked through all the following next steps that we have to complete in order to achieve 30% design. We are anticipating 30% design will be completed on around November 17th. That's the target date for us to roll out 30% concept to the council, as well as to the public. We'll certainly keep you updated on that date as we move that process forward. And finally, I also had a conversation with Lieutenant Governor Polito last week, and talked to her about some of our delays and the fact that the $5 million, which was earmarked between two fiscal years, that we needed an extension this year on the $2.5 million. Have not heard back from her yet, but have also spoken to our legislators, as well as Secretary Jay Ash regarding that. Colleos, the company that operates the commuter rail trail, came in with their whole team. On September 29th, Counselor Cronin was able to join us for their presentation. Scott Scory is their new GM. They have many challenges ahead of them, but we appreciated their time, information, and the contacts. And their customer service manager is interested in working with us on promoting the summer shuttle. On last Friday, I had the opportunity to tour the Essex County Rehab Center for men and women, for those who are addicts. And this was the program that the sheriff really pushed for last December, to initially open up 40-something beds for men. This is an alternative to incarceration or being charged if you agree to voluntary treatment in this rehab facility. And we really needed the similar facility for women, because the only option was to send women to Framingham. I was very pleased with the kind of holistic wraparound supports that the individuals who are in this facility are receiving, and from there, once they finish their several weeks of treatment, move on to a longer-term facility. I think it holds a lot of promise in this terrible epidemic that has ravaged Essex County in terms of opioids and heroin. We also had a, the Energy Advisory Committee invited Senator Ives and Representative Tontur and myself to a meeting last week to update our legislators on what we're doing in terms of energy initiatives. And this committee had started under Mayor Moke, has evolved, and since we became a green community and solarized mass, so we had an opportunity to update them on a whole range of initiatives and looking for their support to keep their, you know, eyes open if there are things that grants or other programs that Newburyport could be eligible for. It was a very productive meeting. I'm also very happy to report that last Wednesday, I received a call from Rear Admiral Pullen, who called from DC to announce that our application for re-upping our five-year as a designated Coast Guard city had been approved. And we talked about doing a formal dedication and receiving a new proclamation once we are doing the ribbon cutting for the new Harbor Master facility. Jay Ash was here last week, Secretary Ash, as the keynote speaker. The Pennies for Poverty, a nonprofit group that does pretty significant work in terms of addressing issues of hunger and poverty in our community, invited Secretary Ash to come and speak on housing. And it was, it was a great presentation on his part about what's happening on state level and initiatives. And I, those of you who might have heard that he was recruited as a finalist for Cambridge to be the town manager or city manager, and I'm happy to report that he withdrew and is staying put as Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, and I think that makes a lot of sense for all of us here in Newburyport, too. Last Thursday, Ethan Manning, our finance director, Julie Lengaran, our treasurer, Patty Moore, Chief Administrative Officer, and myself went to Randolph for the annual Mass Municipal Law Update, which was primarily focused on the many, many changes that happened with the passage of the Mass Modernization Bill. Certainly, we will keep you updated as things are before us that are implicated by this bill. Revenue Task Force, we had our second meeting last week also, and our goal of this task force is to bridge the gap of $1 million to $1.5 million. It's a structural deficit that we've been struggling with year after year after year in terms of funding our schools. We have a nice cross-section of school committee, city counselors, community member on the team. And so we've reviewed the original task force, short and long-term recommendations, updating on what we've accomplished since the completion of that group. We're looking at our current fiscal status revenues, identifying new potential revenues, and we're looking at a plan that the finance director has put forth, talking about being able to achieve a closure of that gap in a three-year period of time. Superintendent was very, very pleased to hear that that is a potential. So we're, that's what our task is, we're really working on that. Also, one of the important components of this is to continue our advocacy for Chapter 70, and also a change in how they fund charter schools. I think we've had that conversation before, that there isn't a lot of opposition to charter schools, it's the way they fund it. As all of you know, we have 163 students who are in our charter school. They receive $1.9 million right off the top of our assessment for our Chapter 70 funding, and we have $2 million left to fund, to educate 2,300 students. So there's a real problem with the way charter schools are funded, not with charter schools. So we need to continue advocating for Chapter 70 and charter school funding reform, but we also think it's important for us to improve our communication to the community about how the state budget is developed and how we develop our budget. We did this probably six years ago, and it was very helpful to the school community to listen to how the budgets are developed. The joint meeting of the city council and school committee per our charter to discuss our fiscal status before we begin planning for, I can't even believe I'm saying this, FY18 budgets, is November 15th at 7:00 PM at the Senior Community Center. Please let me know as soon as possible if this is problematic for any of you. We closed on the Kelly School property. The deed has been recorded, and we have received $747,606.46 on October 5th. Dominus and Corey have initiated the construction contract, beginning with the removal of asbestos. So our finance team and, you know, obviously working with the schools, since this was a school building that was closed, will begin to look at what is the best use of that funding. And obviously, we do not want to just spend it at a one-time, like, say, operations for schools next year, because then it's gone. We have to be more strategic in terms of how we use that particular money. Today was the Mass Municipal Association Executive Board meeting, and as first Vice President of the Mayor's Association, was able to attend this executive board to set the legislative agenda for cities and towns for this coming year. I don't think it's any surprise that at the top of our list is Chapter 70 reform, and trying to move the legislature and the administration to focus on all of the work that was done by the Chapter 70 task force over last year. Chapter 90, roads and sidewalk money, was also on the top of our list, as well as local revenue options. More details on these particular resolutions and initiatives will be available as we approach the Mass Municipal Annual Meeting in January. On October 14th, this Friday at 8:00 AM, in Amesbury at the Innovation Center, is the MMA legislative updates. They travel around the state. So if you're interested in going and talk about local issues, I encourage you to join me at that meeting. I gave you a list of updates from the parks, because I think this is important for you to read, because there's so much work happening on the parks. Last week, I focused a lot on the construction in the city. I think one of the most important things to talk about is Fuller Field. $50,000 worth of sod was installed at Fuller Field. Now, obviously, this is of concern because of the watering ban that we have in the city, and in order for sod to take, it needs to be watered fairly regularly. So if anyone sees us watering the field, the water is not from Newburyport. It's being trucked in, and it's being pumped into our irrigation system. Very concerned about some of the hazardous trees. We've had some talk about that earlier in a previous update, but one of the things that I thought was interesting at the parks that they, Bartlett Tree Service focused on, we have $5.1 million worth of tree assets in those parks that are listed there. So my Kenneth C.R. Parks Manager gives you a list of all the things that he's doing with trees. He will have his arborist certification shortly, and will be able to do much of the work in-house that needs to happen with our trees. And because of the drought, we have also seen a loss of 30% of turf and 10% of city plantings of trees citywide. So we've got to start really paying attention to this in terms of our, this major asset in our city of trees. In streets, we've had planning and DPS go out because there's some issues with the walkway, some structural issue concerns, that bricks and other pieces there. So Parks is going to be putting together a plan and working with the business group downtown to get those completed. I had submitted to you two weeks ago a supplemental budget, which I have done every year since I have been mayor. Most of those supplemental budgets have been upwards to $80,000 or more, depending on how things shake out in terms of local aid. The budget that I put before you was for $12,000. I had learned over the weekend, and you had tabled that motion, I had learned over the weekend in conversations with the DPS director, that he had not yet signed his contract with Linfield, and that I would appreciate it if you would reconsider the supplemental budget for increase in his raise. I believe that if that is a successful vote tonight, that DPS director, who has been here for 10 consecutive years and has devoted 24/7, no matter what the weather conditions or festivals are, his commitment to the city, and I strongly encourage you to pass that. And finally, Dr. Slocombe, who you heard speak briefly tonight, is before you. I would ask respectfully that you confirm his appointment tonight. We are missing a member on our Board of Health, because Dr. Codon had moved to West Newbury. We have pretty significant issues that will be coming up before the Board of Health regarding the evergreen development, and we could really use his level of expertise on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions?
Counselor Devlin?
Yes. Madam Mayor, at the last meeting with regard to the garage, I had asked for the contact at the FTA and the Mass Department of Transportation. I got an email, and it was my understanding that Andy Port, the planning director, was going to send it to me, which he stated in that meeting. I got an email from him October 4th stating that after the meeting, the mayor asked that you go through her office on this matter, so I will defer to her. I was assuming that I would get that contact information from your office, but I haven't received anything yet. It could have been sent to my...
No, it has not been sent to you.
Okay. He would send that to me. It was a request at the last meeting. I would appreciate it.
There's been a change of the FTA person, and we do not have that name as of yet.
Okay. How about the Department of Transportation?
I'm in the middle of negotiating a situation with the Mass DOT Executive Director, and I would prefer that we talk about this offline. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is a request from a city counselor, and nobody contacted me in the last two weeks to tell me about this. So, you know, I'm just going to repeat my request, please.
I just have a couple of quick questions. On the garage, would it be possible for the council to receive a copy of the MOU that was just signed with the MVRT?
Sure.
Thank you. Second question is, one thing about the design that I'm curious about is, have they had any opportunity to look at the entrances and exits? I know that was something we talked about. If I understood correctly, at the time, there was one entrance on Merrimack for the lower level, and one entrance on Titcomb for the upper levels. Has that been looked at? Is there any chance or hope that we might be able to make some adjustments to that?
No. This, the, the size of the garage cannot accommodate any change of that. It has to be that entrance from Merrimack will be that one level, and then the upper levels will be from Titcomb.
Okay. And then last two questions. Is the intent that, if I understood correctly from our last meeting, the $630,000 has been bonded but not yet spent, is the intent that that won't be touched until after the 30% design is presented? I don't know the exact timeline.
That's correct. That would be used, the reason that that was requested was to move to 100% design.
Right.
And recall, we thought that we were going to be moving a little faster than where we are.
But in other words, we'll have the opportunity to look at the three...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Last question I have is on an unrelated matter. I noticed that there was a notice about hydrant flushing will be happening in the city.
Yes.
Is there any potential to capture the water from the flushing of the hydrants to use on Fuller Field or use on our trees? It's a lot of water.
We certainly can ask about that.
I don't know if, I don't know how fire engines fill up. I mean, is there some way, it's a lot of water, so some way to, and I understand it has to be done for the health of the water system, but is there a way to capture it?
But to use it for other purposes.
Yeah, because I know parks, they need it for Fuller, and I know the Tree Commission was looking for water as well.
Thank you. I will check on that. I appreciate the suggestion, counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want consent agenda?
The consent agenda tonight consists of the approval of the minutes for the September 26th meeting. There's one transfer, which is from the HR department to HRA for $30,000, and HRA Administration. HRA is Healthcare Reimbursement Act. That's to go to Budget and Finance. There are five communications. First communication is number 91, Letter to the Council from Jay Sweet on ZVA. That's to be referred to Planning and Development. Second communication, number 92, is a letter regarding the youth hockey tag day on November 19th, License and Permits. The next communication, number 93, on Loco Sports Road Race. That's to be taken up in the regular agenda at the request of the president. Next communication, 94, Fuel River Run on 572017, to be referred to Public Safety. Last communication, number 95, is a letter regarding the Crossing Guard at Colton Drive, again to be referred to Public Safety. Following appointments, two reappointments. Appointment 71, Vaughn Abbott, 61 Prospect Street, to the Cultural Council until 10:01 2019. Appointment number 72, Paul S. Cadace, 135 Beech Road, Salisbury, Constable, until 12:01 2019. Following first appointments, appointment number 73, Susan Bryan Cardiff, 12 Washington Street, to the Cultural Council until 11:01 2019. Appointment 74, Afroz Khan, 85 Prospect Street, Cultural Council until 11:01 2018. The next appointment, appointment 75, Dr. Slocombe has been removed also at the request of the president, to be taken up in the regular agenda. That with those two modifications is the consent agenda this evening.
Yes.
If I could just make amendment, I believe the letter in regards to the Crossing Guard at Colton Drive should be going to Joint Education. That's a school issue. Thank you.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Move on to the regular agenda? And take the motion to mayor's update to receive and file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Take up Communication 93?
Communication 93 is Loco Sports Road Race on November 13th, 2016.
Motion to refer to Public Safety.
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Cronin.
Just direct this to the appropriate authority, which I believe is the clerk. We're short on time on this, and the insurance policy is out, last year's policy. So if you can just talk to them and get an update, we can move on it.
All favor?
Aye.
Both? Second reading?
Second reading are as follows. Susan Chase, 44 Oak Street, Emma Andrews, 103017. Donna Conway, 27 Melrose Street, Emma Andrews, 103017. In fact, the three, next three are all to Emma Andrews, 103017. Ayn G. Elrott, 43 Purchase Street. Elizabeth Valeriani, 29 Oak Street. And Elizabeth L. Watson, 53 Warren Street, Unit 315.
Motion to approve collectively? Second.
Roll call?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Appointment 75?
Appointment 75 is Dr. Robert E. Slocombe, 38 Jefferson Street, to the Board of Health until January 1st, 2020.
Motion to approve?
I'll take a, I'll take a motion to approve in one reading.
Double.
Is there a second in that?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
A motion to approve in one reading. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Want orders?
Orders. First order is submitted by Counselor Tanta. That is a tabled order, reads as follows. City Council of the City of Newport approves the mayor's fiscal 2017 supplemental budget request number one, in the total run of $12,532.88. General Fund, $10,190.57. Water Enterprise Fund, $1,171.15. Sewer, $1,171.16.
Motion to approve and table? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to amend?
Which amendment?
To strike the human resource, language referring to the Human Resources Director and the Fire Chief, just leave the DPS director.
Want to take them separately, then? Is that what you're asking?
Whatever the president's...
Take a motion, take them separately. Is that your motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second on that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You take the DPS director first?
Motion to approve? Second.
And the amount is?
The amount is $3,513.46.
And there was a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to ask a question. I understand from reading in the media that there was an offer of $5,000. I'm just wondering, where's the difference between the $3,000 and the $500 and change here, and the $5,000 that was reported? If anybody knows.
Patty?
The difference will be made up within savings that we have in the salaries and the budget there, from open positions and other salaries. We've got a little bit there that we can offset that with, and not have to come back.
The total increase is $5,000?
Correct.
Okay.
But we only need this much in the supplemental budget.
Okay. Any further discussion? Counselor Connell?
I'm going to vote in favor of this and encourage my fellow counselors to do the same. I think Counselor Tanta made the case last week that I'd like to speak in favor of, and that was that we live in a competitive environment here. There are 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth. We're on a border with New Hampshire, and although our competitors near us on the border are not going to drive the price of employers, of employees up, but on the, on the near border is not my concern. The farther border to the Portsmouth area is my concern. And we have in the past lost very good people to New Hampshire, as well as to the other communities in the Commonwealth. And I know that at least one other counselor, Counselor Cronin, had an opportunity to speak to the DPS director, and I appreciate the fact that he, as well as perhaps others who I didn't know about, and I spoke with him as well. He's a terrific employee. He's had a stellar service record. As the mayor stated, he's been out there day and night during emergency situations, during situations where there's a pipe collapse or a, or a pipe break, as well as during the sometimes heavy winter storms we have. And for what I consider short money, we maintain continuity of service. We have a lot of projects underway already. We have the Hale Street project, we have the pump station about to go underway, we have the rail trail going. And I think this is an awful time to be shifting horses, when we might have the opportunity to ride the horse that we know performs well, right through the end of these projects. So I strongly encourage my fellow counselors to vote in favor of this, and the other two employees' raises as well. Merit raises don't... We're only talking about DPS director now. All right. I'll save my comments about the others then later. Thank you, Mr. President. All right. I'll save my comment about the others then later. Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call.
So motion approved, $3,513.46 for the DPS director. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'd like to refer the Human Resources Director and the Fire Chief issues back to Budget and Finance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Bless you.
Second.
Order number two.
City Council of the City of Newport hereby orders pursuant to Code Section 13166, no person shall park any vehicle on High Street, High Street north side of the street from Barton Street to 1.33 feet east of Barton Street. No parking anytime. Submitted Counselor Zede.
Motion to refer to Public Safety, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Move on to ordinances. Second read?
Second reading of ordinance number 12, which is an ordinance to amend street sidewalks and other public places regarding signage, merchandise, and beautification of public property, Section 12-1.5, A, B, C, all the way through to M.
Motion approved on second reading.
Any discussion? Roll call.
This is motion approved ordinance number 12. Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agan?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Move on to committee ordinance. Budget and Finance.
Motion to remove order 078, Tidcombe Street order.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Go ahead.
Motion to amend. The order states that essentially that the appraisal be done by October 4th. And I'd like that to move that both instances were stated in 1B and then again in 2A, referred instead to October 31st.
Second.
Discussion?
On the amendment, correct?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Counsel Zede?
I'm pointing to support this as I feel that the appraisal is, you know, a completely necessary and important part of due diligence for this project. I'd just like to review history briefly and just remind that we noted the need for an assessment or, excuse me, an appraisal back in March via the resolution that also established the IEG. So I wanted to, while I am supporting it, express a little bit of frustration that we haven't done it yet to this point. So I hope that this will be a movement in the right direction so we can get this information and make the best possible decision on behalf of the taxpayers of Newport.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Next?
That's it from Budget and Finance.
Join Ed?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. We met with the school committee last week. We talked about a variety of issues. We hadn't met in a few months, so I'm going to have a little bit more than I'd like to have. But the first item that we talked about was the status of the recycling program at the NOC. There were some issues with it last year. It didn't take as well as over at the Brezner Hand School. Recycling program went quite well over there. So the superintendent is going to be checking in with the school and seeing how the first few weeks of school is and seeing if both the custodial staff, volunteers, and the children are all participating in the program. We had a great discussion on the future of choice funds. Currently, just to throw some factoids out here, currently we have 43 students that bring in about $600,000 to our school budget. 30 of these students are juniors and seniors. So that's incoming money, and soon these kids will be graduating out. We also have, in contrast, 44 students that are choicing out of our district, and we're paying about $288,000 to school districts that they've gone to. So this does pose a future deficit for us. The superintendent tells us that opening Newport schools to choice is reviewed every year, but class sizes are very important to the teachers, and they do everything possible to keep the class sizes down. So in that case, it makes it so we're not able to open choice in some instances to children outside of Newport. The superintendent is working on a program that would allow foreign students to attend Newport High School during their junior and senior years, and the attendance of these students are reimbursed at $16,500 per year. So that's pretty good. Cameras in the high school. The questions we had out there were why was the number of cameras reduced, but why did the costs stay the same? The bids came in much higher than estimated. Currently, the project's about $6,000 over the $340,000 budget. The door and the camera wiring is complete, and the electrical contractor is waiting on door hardware for the project to be completed. There was a discussion about privacy concerns. I think there was a forum at, well, I know there was a forum at the high school. I believe the kids spoke out about some of these privacy concerns, and it was suggested by Counselor Connell that the students be informed on the restrictions of these cameras. How will these cameras be used? How will they not be used? The school committee talked to us about the Revenue Task Force. The mayor touched on this in her update. Cheryl Sweeney, the co-chair of the school committee, explained the following, that conversations are starting to be held to develop a future budget. They'd like to redesign the budget process, including input from parents and the public on their priorities. So in the past, it seems like the school budget's been developed, and then, of course, the parents and the public care about it, and they say, well, why isn't this in there? Why isn't that in there? So they like to open that communication up early with the public to see if they could get those things included into the budget. They're looking for more transparency and really a longer time to plan out their budget. The update on the strategic plan has been moved to our November agenda. School start times were discussed. Assistant Superintendent Angela Bick participated in a meeting of Superintendent and Athletic Directors of the Cape Ann League Schools for a discussion of later start times. The simple fact is, is Newport cannot move to later start times unless everybody else in the Cape Ann League moves with them because it will affect games, athletic contests. It will affect internships and a whole host of other things. So unless everybody moves together, it just may not happen. So the school committee did a survey. They got a lot of interesting information that they're going to share with us. And then the last item was field use time discussion, and we moved that to the November agenda also. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And when's the next meeting?
Our next meeting, I don't, but I could tell you in a few minutes.
Thank you very much. Lessons and permits?
Oh, nothing. It's tight.
Neighborhood and City Services?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that we remove order 75, the Resolution on Boyd Drive Development, out of committee, please.
75?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have that here or not?
We don't have it.
We don't have it, so...
No, I withdraw my motion. Yeah, I should have.
Planning and Development?
Nothing to report.
Public Safety?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove order 67, Hillside Ave, Cottage Court.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. In committee, we amended this to delete Cottage Court at this time. There's some time. This is part of the Hillside Sustainable Living project. So there is certainly some time here. The Hillside residents wanted to move forward at this time so we can revisit Cottage Court. It came out of committee 3 to 0 in support. And if I may add, this whole thing was a collaborative effort between the neighbors, the developer, David Hall, Planning Board, and this is one of the things that they came up with as a solution.
Do we need a motion to delete Cottage Court?
Yes.
Sub move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So as amended?
As amended, motion approved.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to move order 71, blind person signage.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just, this is very short and sweet. With discussions with Clerk Jones, it's been thought that best avenue here would be to set up a division where we kind of track different advisory signs where we can see if they're still needed down the road and we know where they are. So this came out of committee 3, 0 as well.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Go ahead.
And final one, communication number 90, motion to remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead.
Motion approved.
Second.
What is it we're approving?
This is the Real Men Wear Pink.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And you'll notice I am as well.
Great men think alike.
And it's an American Cancer Society initiative in Market Square on October 14th, 4:00 to 7:30, to raise money to battle cancer. And this came out of committee 3, 0.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you. Public Utilities? Nothing?
Public Utilities or Planning and Development?
Planning Development.
I'm sorry.
Public Utilities?
Yes. Sorry, Mr. President. I'm all behind. Just wanted to report, I just wanted to report on a couple items. Nothing's coming out tonight, but report progress. So Mobility LLC came and met with us a couple weeks ago. Essentially, they want to do a deal with the city for a communication system, and we need to study that with staff because we don't have anything off the shelf to deal with that. It's not just your everyday poll. It's something different. The Resolution on Boyd Drive, actually, we were meeting jointly with Neighborhood and City Services on that, and we continued it to October 27th, I believe.
Thursday.
Yeah. So we've continued that, so we'll be taking it up again. By that time, we should have more information about the water resources. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rules Committee?
Assembly Report.
Good of the auto. Counselor Junta?
Getting back to, in regards to next joint ed meeting, will be November 7th, 5:30 at the high school, room 118. And again, on the agenda will be a discussion about the strategic plan and field use times. Thank you.
What about the, we're going to wait on the start times for school? That won't be on the agenda that time?
It will not.
Okay, thank you.
Unless you want it on. The Crossing Guard will be on the agenda, yes.
Thank you.
And if anybody on the council wants anything discussed in the schools, please send me your suggestion, and we will bring it up.
Thank you. Take a motion to adjourn?
Sub move.
All in favor?
Aye.